Six o'clock, we call the meeting to work. First item up, we roll call, we have everybody in attendance. And we will stand for the pleasure of the leaders. The pleasure of the leaders.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God in the universal with liberty and justice as our own.
Alright, welcome everybody. First item up will be to approve the meeting agenda. We have one addition under business items will be item G. It would be to change the January 2023 meeting date. I don't have any other changes.
I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of G under business items.
Okay. Motion by Brenda, do we have a second? Second by Ann. Any discussion on the agenda? There are no discussion on the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say. Janice Carries, opportunity for visitors to address the board. Anybody who would like to address the board? Doesn't appear so, so we'll move on. We have acknowledgements from school board candidates, so we'll have a new board member. Starting in January, it will be missing one of our current board members, so congratulations there. Fall advisors, coaches, and athletes, and participants. And all state fall athletes, cross country, section 8A team academic award, boys' gold, girls' gold. Charlie Larson, 13th at State, named all state. Football district champions. Volleyball, team all state gold academic award, Kelly Isman. Kaya Nelson, all state academic. Brian, you have anything to add?
Yeah, just want to reiterate the thanking everyone that ran for school board, for their interest, and all the voters. And also, thank you to all the advisors and coaches, and all our participants this fall. Congratulate them on their, on their success.
We'll move on to administrative reports. Mr. Nelson, do you have an elementary principal and AD report?
Enrollment, we're at 423. We had just over 93% attendance at parent-teacher conferences on Monday. So a very high attendance rate, so we'd like to thank all the parents that showed up, showed interest in their kids, so thank you to them. On November 28th, we are having a Title I family night. And we are having an author come up, and he will be giving three different presentations in the afternoon to students in small groups. And then that night will be given a presentation to anyone who is interested in attending. That will be at 6:15 at the elementary gymnasium on November 28th. December 1st is the elementary band concert for the fifth and sixth graders. Fifth graders first band concert, and that'll be over here at the fine arts auditorium. Looking forward to that. And our instructional leadership team continues to look at math. And we've been looking at four different curriculums. We've got samples from companies, so teachers have been looking at those, and we'll be discussing that at our next meeting coming up here on December 7th and going from there. Congratulations Charlie Larson, said 13th state cross-country tournament. That's an awesome feat for a sophomore. Volleyball team finished with nine wins on the season, and they got to host the home playoff game with DGF. Football team finished with a 7-2 record and were their district champions. The districts kind of take the place of conferences that changed several years ago. That was first district championship for Dr. Rapids since the switch, so congratulations to them. Fall play was this last weekend, thanks to all the students that participated, people that came out to the fall play, and for the browns for being the advisors for the fall play this year. Band concert tomorrow, hopefully the weather permits, wind doesn't come up too strong here, so, and then choir concert on next Tuesday coming up here. And then, winter sports are just starting to get rolling. Dance has been going for several weeks. Girls' basketball started this week, and wrestling and boys' basketball start next week. So, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Janaszewski, high school principal.
Hey, student enrollment, we are down a little bit at 406. November 4th was the end of first quarter, and we had parent-teacher conferences also on Monday. During our November workshops, we identified at-risk students, so we worked very hard to schedule appointments with those parents or guardians to discuss some action plans for their students and hopefully get them on the right track. Mrs. Lage also scheduled meetings with some juniors and seniors to talk about working towards graduating time, so those were some really great meetings. November 7th was staff development day. Couple highlights, we had department meetings where they focused on their department goals, talked about course offerings and some brainstorming for career exploration and introduction for our students. And then in our staff meeting, we talked about celebration, challenges, and then did a whole group department goal review with our teachers. I want to thank Mr. Larson, Mr. Marsh, and Mrs. King on completing their program approvals for CTE funding. That is a good chunk of money that they bring back to our district for completing those approvals. The honor society hosted a blood drive this past week and had 25 participants that donated blood and saved lives. And then a few other fun activities that have built learning, trust, and success this past month. We had 11 students cast their first ballots last week, that was pretty fun to see. Our staff members hosted the Boobash at Lake Region Electric on Halloween. Mr. Marsh and Mr. Larson took students to Alexandria to explore the campus and learn more about their programming. Mr. Witzig and Mr. Sturdeman took students to U.N. Morris to learn about sustainable energy. I think Sylvia, are you on that field trip? Do you want to just talk a little bit about what you saw?
Yeah, it's actually going to have a print on my note card here. Last week, 10 of us traveled to the University of Minnesota Morris to learn about sustainability and renewable energy. In addition to touring the campuses, Winterbine, Solar Towns, and Biomass Plant, we toured the West Central Research Center and the local carrot processing plant, fresh at LLC, so that was interesting. And I'll also talk about that accounting or that Microsoft campus visit. Students from Mrs. King's accounting and computer applications classes visited the Microsoft campus in Fargo. They toured campus facilities and then heard from a panel of Microsoft employees and learned about careers in the technology industry from software development to sales.
Okay, and then Mrs. Hall took Spanish students to Bergen Falls for a school collaborative event. And then lastly, Mrs. Thompson and Ms. Dunbar took students to Lake Region Electric Co-op to learn more also about careers available there, and then just some general dos and don'ts for applying for jobs. Upcoming events, on Thursday we have our band concert. Next week, we have our fall choir concert. Next Wednesday, we're going to play a school-wide turkey bingo and then enjoy the Thanksgiving rick that Thursday and Friday. And I also just put a picture on there for you, if you have not walked by the commons area, to see a really cool wall that Mr. Bruman and Mrs. King and Mrs. Breen have kind of spearheaded. We call it our build wall, and you'll see that month by month, we're just putting on there things that have been opportunities for kids to build their learning experience at the school. So, this is actually a bold picture, because I watched some students yesterday add things to November, December, so take a chance to look at that. And then I'll pass it on to Ellie and Sylvia.
I just want to talk about your math team in the autumn.
Yeah, so junior high and all bowl and math team seasons are in full swing currently and have already competed in a few meets. Senior high math team has placed second in their section at their first meet. And then also, we have had the AMC 10 and AMC 12 compare in math tests so far. Any questions?
I don't hear any here. Thank you.
Trade shows report for the month end of October. Overall, it was a pretty, pretty busy month for the school district. We started our investment account at $6.4 million, and we ended with $5.9. The reason why you see that significant drop there is we're in that dry period where the state literally pays us no state aid. And the reason is because our levy payment comes in October, and the state is very, very smart about that, so they do not release, they withhold. That's why it's always good to have good cash on hand. As I mentioned, the first payment of the levy came in, and you see that recorded under receipts, so our first payment came in at about $1.7 million from Otter Tail Becker and Clay County, that's where the footprint of our majority of our district is. So, that went straight into our banking account rather than our investment accounts, and that is what keeps us afloat for the month of October and part of November. So receipts, we're at $2.5 million. Accounts payable, we're at $1.4 million. Highly elevated to what we're normally used to, we're normally in the range of between $800,000 to $900,000. Why it was so high this particular month, two big projects came to completion. First one is the auditorium project, so we had that payment that we had to give Wagner's for $291,000, which was a pledge from the foundation. Another project that, excuse me, I've kind of finalized here in the last couple of weeks is the Abeyment Parking Lot Project, to which we had to pay, Central Specialties, another payment of $290,000 as well. So, that's what brought us our payables significantly high. Payroll was sitting at $400,000, again very standard for us. Adjustment, journal entries for me to, for me to balance the books. Journal entries are a little bit elevated due to a benefit, benefit provider that we switched in the past, our health savings account that used to be administered by Further. Since then, WEX took over, and there, we're working with them. Our timings are not the same, so that's why you see that $21,000 adjustment there. At the end of the day, we finished with cash on hand in our banking account with $584,000. Again, very busy month. Coming up for the month of December, today we just submitted our audit data to the state. We ended in a very good place. We're working with I. Bailey and Brian Steviger, who will present our financials on the December board meeting. But overall, it was a pretty good fiscal year for the district, and we'll go into details when we cover the audit, but it's good to kind of get that done and off my plate. Other than that, if you have any questions on payables, please feel free to reach out or look at the report, and I'm more than happy to expand on anything. Any questions regarding the treasures report for the month of October? Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you. Super dinner report.
Okay, safe routes to school grant update. They were here at parent-teacher conferences, two members from West Central Initiative, one was at the elementary, one was at the high school, and they were talking to parents while they came in and asking different questions regarding the transportation to school and then going home after school. So, looking at like, they riding bike, they walking, driving, where they coming from, then they were getting into questions where they cross and what would they like to see changed on their roads to school if they walk or ride bikes. So they're gathering information, and then on Monday, or sorry, in January, they're going to present that information to the team. So we have a team that's put together a committee, and they'll present that, and then we'll share that with the board after they present it to the committee. ISD 548, the district enrollment. October, we were at 833 students, and November, we are at 836 students, which is good. Went up from October. Last May, we ended the school year at 843. So we're down a few kids right now if we're going to compare it to last May. Professional development, administrative team's been involved in a number of different professional development opportunities that they've had. One was the leader in meet curriculum videos training. We had an hour training looking at different curriculum videos to use that teachers could use in the classrooms and what we could use district-wide. So that was a good discussion, presentation that they had with us. MDE virtual workshop, that was a, it's a, I think there's about six sessions that they are offering, different ones, and it is on educator well-being and so it's focused on employee well-being and keeping them retention, keeping staff in education. Next one's Derek Francis, he was here this past fall at staff workshop. It's cross-cultural inclusion, understanding, you know, people around you, their differences. And he's going to be here January 16th, he'll present to our staff from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. And then on the next day, he is going to do an assembly for the high school, an assembly at the elementary school for grade sports for six. So, it'd be good for our students and the staff to work with him. Also, Mesa, it was a great start in finance academy that is offered throughout the year. Today's agenda was focused on budget planning, special education finance, and communicating about school finance across multiple audiences. So, it was a good day for a workshop. And it's kind of nice that you don't have to go all the way to the cities, because you have the option, you can go there, or you can do it virtually, and it's nice to have it virtually, so you're not traveling six hours for the one-day workshop. A few school board agenda items that I want to talk to you about. Under consent items, under personnel, we're approving a part-time custodian, and just this part-time custodian's replacing a custodian that resigned in the fall. So, I just want you to understand that. And then approving the hire of a long-term special ed paraprofessional, we approved a leave of one of our paraprofessionals in elementary earlier on this fall, so that is for approval at this meeting, for during that long-term time. Business items, Canvas election results, that's just to approve the results of the school board election. Authorized issuance of certificates of election, that was, that is for who was elected to the school board. So both are resolutions, and Mr. Carter, he'll read those resolutions. Looking at the second reading, policy 722. Just so you know, all the policies tonight have been viewed by the policy committee. They were discussed and reviewed during that time, and now we're looking at policy 722, that'd be the second reading, we had the first reading at the last one. Policy 722 covers public data and data subject requests. The committee did have a question about official and officer, because they use both of them in the previous policy, and now MSBA is recommending using official all the time in that policy. And these updates clarify data subject requests and procedures. So if someone requests some data, there's procedures that they would have to follow. Okay? Policy 102, that's a first reading, so that. Policy committee did review this policy. Policy 102 covers equal educational opportunity. The proposed policy includes connections to the recently updated policy 522, Title IX. The purpose of policy 102 is to ensure that there's an equal educational opportunity provided for all students in the school district. Policy 514, this is a first reading. Policy committee did review this meeting, or this policy in October. Policy 514 is a policy that addresses bullying, so it had minimal updates to this policy. It spells out the abbreviated references, is really the changes in policy 514. Policy 606 is a first reading. This addresses textbooks and instructional materials, and the purpose of this policy is to provide direction for selection of textbooks and instructional materials, so talks about that process. So, policy 102, 514, 606, that would be a first reading. Policy 722 would be a second reading. I think that's all I have on the school board, or on the agenda that you would approve or not approve tonight. Just looking ahead, November 24th, 25th is fall break, and our principals did touch on some of these things. I just want to make sure on December 22nd that you understand that's a half-day for students. December 22nd, that's right before break, it would be a full day for staff. It's going to be a good afternoon for staff to get prepared, so when they come back from break, that they're ready to go. So that's what the purpose is of that half-day. So, the administrative team, principals are working on what that schedule will look like, and then we'll communicate with everyone, school board, students, parents, families, community, of what time their release time would be, and of course, the bus companies, so it's a little picked up on time. Winter break is the 23rd through January 2nd, and then January 3rd, school will resume, and then we'll be into 2023, so. The one item that Mr. Stevens and myself will present tonight is the multi-use building update. You do have a form here that talks about the benefits. Just going back, we've been talking about this for the last couple of months. The multi-use building is the building that we'd like to build at Chauncey Martin Football Field, which would include the trailhead, which would involve the county and the city, and it would include a warming house. So, I want you to be aware of that, that's why we're working with the city and Otter Tail County. The benefits for the city, just kind of some main ones I want to talk about, you know, they've been looking at building a trailhead more down by the river, so now that would replace us, this trailhead, if it was, if we all worked together and build this, that means this trailhead would be done a lot sooner than what they were planning, and it would be done by the end of August. The timeline of the building would be from June of next summer to August, and it'd be completed by mid-August. Direct bike paths from the trailhead are from the multi-use building when the street project is completed right downtown, which would be nice. A warming house would be included in the building, and the warming house, which is going to be nice, and the skating rink is right next to the sliding hill. So it's very nice for families, for convenience. You get a big parking lot, you got the sliding hill, and you got a skating rink, which is going to be very nice for families, and then you'd have the warming house that would be right there with restrooms. So, economic developments, you know, you look at people coming from the outside of Pelican Rapids, coming to the town, a great opportunity for, to bring them in. We did talk to the city, and if they would commit money to this building, we would look at taking over the skating rink supervision and running that under community ed. So they are very interested in that. They think that we agree on between the county, the school, and the city, there would be an MOU between all three of us, we'd understand of who's responsible for what. What the city would be responsible for is setting up the skating rink, tearing down the skating rink, and the maintenance during the winter of the skating rink, and we would work with them too on that, cleaning up snow and things like that, so. So I think a lot of benefits for the city, a lot of benefits for the county. If you look at, you know, for the county, what a great place. We're in the edge of town, right kind of the start of the trail. You have Dairy Queen, you have Larry's, you have a gas station subway, you can go into town, just a great place for them to have the trailhead, large parking lot, and then restrooms, and then we'd have a place for them to air out tires. And then we have, would have a map on the building or near the building for the bike trail. So, for the county, they won't be responsible for any maintenance or cleaning, and both groups would not be responsible for the construction. We would be the general contractor, that would be Mr. Steves. So, I think there's a lot of benefits for us when you look at this building, it's a great way to work with the city and the county, and to build a nice building that would benefit three groups. If you look at our restroom, the restrooms for us, we would have more bathrooms, and Mr. Steves will talk about that a little bit, which would be nice, ADA compliant. We'd have a larger concession stand, more storage, and a concession, ticket booth that's connected, and Mr. Steves will get into that here shortly. So, again, the timeline would be from, starting in June, and being done in August. And I'll let Mr. Steves talk more in detail about the building.
I have to vision this in your mind. We do have floor plan, but as conceptual at this point, and when we get it more finalized, then we'll present it to you guys. We are working with a supplier, and they are providing their architect or designer, I should say, for that. The current building would be torn down, that block building, it was put up in 1976, so it's served its purpose. And if any of you have been to large events up there, you know that we're very, our bathroom facilities are very inadequate. And really, if you were at that section track meet, we had order bodies and everything, and we were just not, you know, prepared to handle all that volume. The new facility then would run east and west, so when you come in the gate where we have the ticket trailer now, we would not be using that anymore. You'd walk up to the front of that building, would have about a 15-foot overhang, and that was a request from the county to have a nice big overhang with picnic tables and stuff for people coming and going out of the trailhead and a place to kind of relax and whatever. Then, the ticket booth would be the first part of the building, and then after that, going to the east, on the south side, we would have two family bathrooms, we'll call them, and those would be open most of the time. Now our bathrooms are, from the time that it's not going to freeze anymore till now, they're open all the time. Those would be on a timer, we put them on a card access lock system, so we can, you know, lock them overnight. But they would be open every day, basically all day, for use of walkers up there, pickball players, the bike path people. But directly adjacent to that on the north side would be the warming house, and that has its own bathroom in there. That then is accessible to the skating rink by going straight north. If you've been up there at all since the city put the boards up, that's a good, you know, that's where the rink will be, there was talk last night at the city council meeting about maybe expanding that, and they could do that easily in that area. All that dirt that was from mountain biking up there that we moved around, we use that to flatten that area out, you know, very well, made a nice, nice big area for us. Moving to the east then, we would have two multi-use bathrooms, male and female, with that there's eight stalls in each one. We currently have two, so that would, would help us significantly. Plus, they have access on both sides of the building. And so you walk in, there'd be a sinks, and then you go to the stalls, so it's not jamming up as far as line lines and stuff on either side. And then going to the east next door would be storage area for equipment, and then the team, the football team uses it during halftime before, that would be the same. And then the far east side, about where the concession stand, walk-up window is now, would be the new concession stand, and that would about triple the size, because the building is 40 feet by 100 feet, it was 115 with that overhang, so that concession area is about 20 by 40, with the north side being storage, and we have large doors planned, so you don't have to store everything in the concession, it can be stored on the north side and then bring it into the concession area. With two roll-up windows for serving, and the same on that ticket area, there's two walk-up windows. walk-up windows on that, which, when that is not being used for ticket area, we would use it for, for storage or for the referees or some, you know, to go at halftime or, or some other stuff like that. The building also can be used for bigger events. There's already talk of bigger biking groups, bicyclists. You've got to separate bikers from bicyclists. Bicyclist groups coming through, and if we can coordinate that, they let us know we can open up parts of the building. Our intent is not to have those big bathrooms open all the time. I, I just don't want that, that risk of those being open all the time. That's a lot of, a lot of facilities there. But it can handle a lot of people. We could have concession stand open, be able to facilitate a lot of things up there. We're looking at Slavon grade, stick-built, which is two by six studs, steel siding, steel It's all on level. We are, like I say, we're working with the building supply company on a floor plan, getting cost estimates from contractors around to see if this is going to be feasible for us. And preliminary numbers are that it is. Hopefully, prices hold. We all know what construction costs can do, so we can hold. But we're moving forward, and we want to have pretty solid numbers by the time we, you know, officially commit to this. But I think it's going to look very nice. We're looking at a black steel roof and probably a little lighter color sides with that kind of a real dark gray, and then with that orange Chauncey Martin sign on the front of it, I think it'll look very, very nice. Look, be a sharp looking building out there. Compared to the block building that's there now. Which is, has done its job. I mean, that thing is, is a beast. Questions? I went over that pretty fast, and I know it's hard to visualize this, but like I said, we will hopefully have a floor plan for you guys to look at and okay and what stuff.
Who pays for the demolition?
That'll be part of it.
Part of what?
The demolition will be part of our total construction cost.
So how are the construction costs allocated?
As far as, well, we will, we will break it out into each entity or, you know, trade. Be the demolition, the site work, the concrete, then you have the building guys, building people, electrical.
So the finance piece is? So we're waiting to hear from the city and the county, and we've had meetings to talk about that. So, right now, we're looking at all the estimates that we have in, just shortly under 500,000 is what we have right now, the total of the building. So the county knows that, and the city knows that. So, our discussions are, is what are they going to be willing to commit to this building? So we're waiting to hear that. We are feeling good, we've had good discussions. I think we're going to be very pleased with what they're going to chip in, the county and the city. But the city, we met with them last night, and we presented, and they're going to talk about it. They threw out some numbers from 150,000, and then a couple board members mentioned that maybe they would discuss and look at, see if they could do a little bit more. But the city would do it over a period of time, they couldn't do it all at one time, which we're okay with. And the county's looking at, they've built these trailheads, and they're right around 50,000, so what they're trying to do is be kind of very similar. So they're not looking at this place and saying, hey, why did, why did you put one way towards this building? So, right now, it looks like the county's going to be right around that $50,000 mark. The city just discussed that number of 150, 125 last night, and they're, they want to go back and look at, see what they can do for, to help out with the county and, and us.
Is there, you know, I think about, did I just see, same student athletes, you know, walk down the walking path for softball and baseball and football and track and field and things like that? Is there any part of this that would be able to, it doesn't sound like there's a locker room facility by any means, but is there any way, and maybe there's no need, I'm not suggesting there is, I just, I think the kids either hauling equipment or just getting prepared for practice over here, crossing 59, and then going over to the athletic complex. Is there anything that we can look at to maybe ease some of the organization for that?
So we had, we had a good discussion on that, and if you look at the pricing of the building for right now, for what we can afford, this is what he talked about, is what we can afford right now. All of a sudden, somebody donates a couple hundred thousand dollars, well, then maybe we can look at it, but that's not happening right now. However, Mr. Steve has talked about, if down the road, let's build it this way with what we have, and down the road, we can always add it if there, if there's a need and money.
One of the, that topic was brought up, Ms. Corf and I had discussed it with some other people. If we had turf, artificial turf on a football field, so it was used for practice every day and, you know, for other things too, it'd make it more feasible also to have a locker room where they just go up there. You still have the same thing of everybody crossing, you know, either you're crossing in your gear or you're crossing, but you have to get there regardless. But we did discuss that at length of, you know, it would be nice, really nice to have that, and, and especially for the visiting team. Now they come into our school and use our, either girls or visitors locker room, depending on the size of their team, to have facility for them also. But we would, we would at least double the cost of this facility right now by doing it.
Do you visualize the, the new facility, which I think is, is great? You know, I think of the softball field, sort of located, you know, it's still, you know, if that tennis court wasn't there, you know, it could be much easier to strategically locate a building that could better accommodate all of the different fields used out there. Is there any, any way, you know, I think to tie, I don't know if it's through walking paths or something, that would be able to kind of just really complete the whole complex out there and to kind of connect it so that if there's a softball game going on, people are going to actually realize there's, you know, bathroom facilities there?
I think now with, sorry to cut you off, I think now with a new parking lot being the way it is, and there is a tarred drive up to the west softball field, that kind of ties that in, plus the softball people, people will park in that area, and it can bring them back. The east field, I think, is too far east to, to get it tied in. And, and baseball is, is really close enough too, to utilize the, you know, they use the bathroom facilities now too. And they've always talked about putting their own bathroom and stuff in, but, you know, there again, you're, you've got a big expense for just a, a one-use thing.
Two-ways.
But I don't know if I answered your question.
You did. And then what do we have for right now? And this will be my last question. And I'm sorry, it's not related to this project, but I'm thinking of brown field, and what do we have for bathroom facilities there right now?
There are those plastic rental units that, that porta-potties that we get, we use, get four of them every year. Right now, there are no public utilities run out there, there's no water and sewer. So, we have talked to Brian Olson about that, when they redo Fifth and Third down there, the possibility of extending that, but that expense would be on the school, because, you know, is it feasible for us to run three, four blocks worth of utilities out for, for that usage? When we took over that soccer field, we put in a well out there instead of pumping water out of the, for irrigation of the field, and that helped tremendously. We don't have much water in the river with the drought, and we pump that out quick, so. Whether or not, you know, I don't think the city would allow us to put a sewer system in, you know, for a bathroom facility right now, but, but they were, are talking probably five years down the road before they'd be doing that project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just a couple quick things as far as facilities. We completed all of our, our summer projects. If you've been able to get around to the parking lots, awesome projects to have done. This looks so nice. I think it really makes our facilities look classy. We completed the west softball field, moved the field out 20 feet, pulled the, literally pulled the bleachers up 20 feet then, and changed the fences, and had to do a bunch of work with that, but that's turned out really nice too, and now that's completed. And installed another batting cage over there also. And then the other, other projects have wrapped up. I didn't have time to get pictures up of, of our before and afters like I've done before. But one thing that we've experienced last week was our power outage. None of our facilities, none of our maintenance have generators, and they never have. I told Mr. Corf in the middle of the maintenance time, it's not a generator. But we, we had, we all were meeting, we had a contingency plan set up as far as if we were going to let students out or not. We had made contact with our local power company, and they indicated that they're, you know, they're working with Otter Tail, they're fed from the same, they had the same issues, fault, and to kind of hold tight, and things would come around. And about 10 after 2, I think we got, code after 2, we got the power back on. So it worked good. I think the students or staff did a really good job of stepping up, the ones that were available, and the teachers did a nice job of improvising. The ones that don't have windows to the outside, moved to areas that did. If I had class just, you know, with those windows in that leaders gym now, they were able to keep doing what they were doing, so I think it went well. But, any questions, facilities-wise? And we've hit winter full blast. So we're constantly moving snow and dealing with ice, so. Okay, thank you.
I think the big thing with the power outage is, at the elementary school, when they get out early, they have a lot of phone calls, phones aren't working. So, the concern was is if we send kids home, some of the kids are going to go to places that they shouldn't be at, so, or Home Alone, things like that. So, we kind of talked about what Mr. Steve said too, and then with Mr. Nelson, like, let's try to wait this out, and it worked out, so, let's come back.
With the generator talk, were you also in discussion about internet backup by chance? Because I know when you have internet, as long as you have enough power to the battery, you can at least continue something.
It was just more of a, hey, maybe we didn't.
Don't worry, we talked about it too, but we're now looking into internet backup.
Oh, sure.
Because if power goes out, you know, it's different with electronics.
Is that a battery system or just a smaller generator system?
No, it's actually going to a cellular backup, kind of like Verizon for yourself for internet. I just was curious.
Yeah.
Like I said, if you have enough, yeah, if you have enough battery, obviously you can continue something with the internet then, but.
Can we still have a hard line in the building where we could just plug in an old phone and push that back out?
And anybody under 20 couldn't run it anymore.
Yeah.
You're older.
All right, any questions? Done with the reports, and we'll move on to consent items. IMA, approved board meeting minutes, October 19th, 2022, regular meeting. IMA, financial claims, October bills. C, treasures report. D, accept donations. Student accounts, $100 to Laura Klimic, Viking UT. $100 to Laura Klimic, OMP Scholarship Fund in memory of Dennis Ross. $20 to Becky Hunter. The OMP Scholarship Fund in memory of Dennis Ross. $100, Sally Vialla. I don't know how that's pronounced, but. Girl soccer, $100 for Rotary Club of Pelican Rapids. IMA personnel approved the hire of Mason Layatt, as part-time custodian at PRHS, and approved the hire of Natasha Ross as long-term special education career professional. So do we have a motion for the consent items? Motion by Greg.
Second.
Taken by Brittany. Any discussion of the consent items? Hearing no discussion, all those who favor approving the consent items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Consent items carry. Then we have business items. Give me a second here. Next two are resolutions. So, first one is canvassing election results. Entertainer motion. Canvassing election results. So, motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by Ann. Resolution, canvassing returns of votes of school district general election, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 548 as follows. Is hereby found, determined, and declared that the general election of the voters of the district held on November 8th, 2022 was in all respects duly and legally called and held. As specified in attached abstract, a return of votes cast, a total of 6,617 voters of the district voted at said election on the election of three school board members. For four-year term vacancies on the school board caused by expiration of terms on the first Monday in January, next following the general election as follows. Billy Milbeck, 1,377. Brenda K. Olson, 1,908. Stacy Tollard Del Maris, 1,675. Greg Larson, 1,602 votes. We had 55 write-ins. Three Brenda K. Olson, Stacy Tollard Del Maris, and Greg Larson, having received the highest number of votes, are elected to four-year terms beginning the first Monday in January School district clerk is hereby authorized to certify the results of the election of the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part. So this is a resolution. Molly, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes. Anna?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Now, there's a lot more reading in the other one. You have any suggestions on how I can summarize it? Just read the first. And then summarize the other two.
Yeah, the other three are all the same.
Okay, so authorize issuance of certificates of election. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Brittany. Second resolution. Resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing school district clerk to perform other election-related duties, whereas the board has canvassed the general election for the school board members held on November 8th, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 548, state of Minnesota, as follows. The chair and the clerk are hereby authorized to execute certificates of election on behalf of the School Board of Independent School District 548 to the following candidates: Brenda K. Olson, Stacy Tollard Del Maris, and Greg Larson, who receive a sufficiently large number of votes to be elected to fill vacancies on the board caused by expiration of terms on the first Monday in January next following the election, based on the results of the canvas. The certificate of election shall be in substantially the form attached here too. After the time for contesting election has passed, the candidate has filled all campaign financial reports required by the Minnesota statutes. Chapter 211A, the clerk of the school board is hereby directed to deliver the certificates to the persons entitled thereto, efficiently, or by certified mail. Clerk is hereby, hereby directed to enclose with the certificate a form of acceptance of office and of office in substantially the form attached here too. So basically, we have certificates of election for each board member, it's all spelled out the same, for the period of four-year terms. the same, for the period of four-year terms, beginning the first Monday in January two thousand and twenty-three and expiring the first Monday in January two thousand and So this is a resolution. Molly, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes. Anna?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution carries. Do you want me to read all the policies too?
Okay.
Item C, approve the second reading of policy seven twenty-two. Mr. Corf had gone over that, so do we have a motion?
I'm on motion to approve the second reading of policy seven twenty-two.
Motion by Ann, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion on the second reading of policy seven twenty-two? Thanks for seeking the clarification from Officer Official, Mr. Corf. Any additional discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the second reading of policy seven twenty-two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Carries. Item D, approve the first reading of policy one zero two. Do we have a motion?
I'm on motion to approve the first reading of policy one two.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion on the first reading of policy one twenty-two? Excuse me, one zero two, I'm sorry. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the first reading of policy one zero two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Approve the first reading of policy five fourteen. Do we have a motion?
I'm on motion to approve the first reading of policy five one four.
Motion by Ann, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion on the first reading of policy five one four? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the first reading of policy five one four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Item F, approve the first reading of policy six zero six.
I'm on motion to approve the first reading of policy six oh six.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion on the first reading of policy six zero six? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the first reading of policy six zero six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Last item on the business items will be, change the January two thousand and twenty-three meeting date. So what we ran into is we have the MSBA annual conference. Typically, we'd go down there on that Wednesday night, and I'll be down the entire day. Wednesday, I'll be down there ready, so, looking at meeting dates possibly of January fourth or January eighteenth, so, what dates work the best? Or do they work at all?
I'm looking for it. Did you say something else? Close to have it, the closest to the beginning of the year, or something?
It's recommended, yep. Recommended to be as close to the first, or first part of the year as possible for election of officers. I can do the fourth.
Works for me.
Okay. Greg?
Yep.
The fourth worked for you?
That's good.
Okay. I want to make a motion that we change the January two thousand and twenty-three meeting date to January fourth. So I made that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion on the meeting date changed to January fourth, six P.M.? May normal time, I'm guessing? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the change in the January meeting date to January fourth signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. We're set for January fourth. Okay, last part, upcoming meetings. We have the December fourteenth regular meeting, that includes a truth and taxation meeting. I guess anyone get the audit report too, might be. January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, we have a regular, back up, we'll change that. January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting and reorganization meeting. January twelfth through thirteenth, MSBA conference. So, do we have a motion for adjourned? Question by Brittany. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And Molly, any discussion?
I just want to mention that, I was going to mention when travel's up, the facilities, I think it's a game changer in town, so I've heard a lot of positive remarks, so I'm glad the school started to see that project. It looks, it looks great, and it creates a safe, clean environment for folks.
Still a work in progress, but, okay, let's take it, go to the left now. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Readjourned, thanks everybody.